Good evening, everyone. This is Laura Schifrin. I am calling the meeting to order at 4:31 of the Planning Townsend Planning Board.
Right, 6:31.
Oh, God. Well, I'm not there. Now you know. Believe me, I'm tired enough that it's 8:31. Could I have a roll call, please?
Carol Hofstas present.
Julie Byers present.
Mike Verosco present.
And Laura Schifrin present. Lance is not able to be with us this evening. At this point, Beth, can I ask for the appointment of our affiliate to act as a voting member this evening?
That can be done. Since you're chair, you can go ahead and do that. You don't need a vote.
Okay. So since I'll take that prerogative right now under Chairman's additions or deletions to the agenda, and I will appoint our associate member Ian Santiago as a voting member this evening. Next, 1.3, approval of the minutes December 2nd and December 6th. What is your pleasure, board members?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from December 2nd and December 6th.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing and seeing none. I'll call for a vote of the members. Roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Julie Byers, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
Janordiz, yes.
Very good. And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you very much. Okay, so appointments and hearings beginning at 6:45. So I believe we are not there yet. So can we go down to the work session? So 3.1 is review and discuss Townsend Master Plan 2021 Final Draft Version 11. Isn't there a version 12?
Well, actually, they're planning on submitting a final version to the planning board. I just don't have a date yet when that's coming. So it is in process. I did get an email today saying that that's the we'll be getting, receiving the final draft. It didn't say when, but that's in the works.
Thank you for that update. 3.2, review the draft by law. This is in reference to the Fowl. Were we ready to vote on that yet?
I don't think so. Waiting for Lance on that.
Right. That's what I thought. And that was, I think, the same at the last meeting. 3.3, Safe Roots to School. Carol, did you want to give an update, or?
I don't have any updates from last week.
Okay.
Yeah, she did. She did submit and put in the folder eligible projects under the program. Carol, could you just explain what that is so everyone can look at it? Because I don't know if you saw it. I put it in late.
Yes, it's just a Rachel had sent me. I was trying to get credit for ice cream certificates because of Police Department for bike safety. But basically, it's just a list of it's an activity checklist of things that the town can get credit for. So I just sent that to listen. And it's just a bunch of different, like, when to walk the school days. It's a lot of stuff that the schools would probably do. You know, host a monthly walk-up bike to school day during the school year, that kind of thing. So it's just a checklist of activities that if the town does it, they get credit for safe routes to school.
Okay, so I think I recall some of that at the last meeting.
Yes.
I remember about the ice cream.
Yeah, I was hoping. I thought that was a good idea for the Police Department. They were very nice about that, but.
Yeah, with just for years. I don't know if, I think you were saying they didn't, they didn't want to.
Consider. Yeah, they didn't consider that. But so I got the list that I put it up. I gave it to Beth to just put it up. So if anybody wants to just look at what kinds of things they're looking for.
Yeah, I can show that, actually, if I can get to it.
Could I suggest something to Madam Chair?
Yes.
Carol, you might want to send that over to Emmy Hoff in the Recreation Department.
Sure, I can do that.
I know that some of the parents drop off kids there during the day, and that's close enough so that they might want to participate in something from there.
Okay, I could do that.
So I just put up on the screen.
Yeah, here it is, checklist.
Sorry, yeah. It's a little hard to read, but they're, you know, just a number.
Okay, well, maybe the board can review that. And if they have any comments, we can bring that up again at the next meeting.
And I think different color codes mean different, a set of different types of points that you can earn.
I think Chaz's idea is a good one, to send it to Amy and see if they have any input of what might, from that list, we might be able to get more points for with them cooperating. Good idea. Let me see if I can quickly do this already. 3.4, Zoning Board of Appeals Referral 478 Main Street. Beth, can you fill us in on that?
Yep. Did you read the application in your folders? That is basically, where are we now?
Right there.
Yeah. So the application is, yeah, 478 Main Street. It's the appeal of the VBA's decision as well as a special permit. The proposal is to operate a dog grooming business in, one dog at a time. So it's very small, in the home, in residence. So I don't know if you had a chance to review it, but there's a letter as well as the pictures here. And there's the house. So it's just something you have to kind of take a look at and, you know, see if you have any comments or concerns. It's a small operation. Here's the layout, grooming table, bathtub, crate, drying table, that kind of thing, reception area.
If I remember correctly, I thought the building commissioner said it was a non-conforming use.
Yes, that is why the zoning board of appeals will be reviewing it right here. It says.
Cannot be.
But it's similar to the Townsend zoning bylaws allowed use of a commercial kennel slash animal vet where it's allowed in a residential district.
Except down below where it says conclusion, he cannot be approved at this time.
Right, he can't issue the building permit unless the applicant goes before the zoning board of appeals and they decide, you know, as he says here, to either overturn his decision and issue a special permit for the use. And that's what the applicant has applied for.
Do we know if the Board of Health signed off on this?
They have, actually. They have their hearings and gone through the hearings. And they have issued, they have returned a comment. I don't have it right here handy, but yes, they ship, they're all, the applicants all set with the Board of Health.
Okay, great. Thank you.
When are the comments due, please?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Beth, when is the comment due?
The public hearing is January 12th, Wednesday, on the, in January 12th.
Do we meet again before that date?
Yes.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Can we do the referral now at this point, or do we?
You can do it right now.
If you want.
By motion?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to refer the, what is it, special permit application?
Yeah.
To the zoning board of appeals for 478 Main Street.
Okay, so it's already there. And the hearing is January 12th. What we can do, and we've done this before, is if we don't have a comment either way, we can just say that planning has no comment at this time. The building inspector has made his decision. Their only option is to go to the zoning board of appeals, which they have, and they have a hearing on January 12th. If we think as a planning board that we have a particular comment, either pro or con, this is when we would make that. So if we're okay leaving it to the zoning board to make the decision and don't see huge impact on the town as a whole kind of thing, then we could just say no comment at this time. Is that correct, Beth?
That is. Yep. And just to note, all these other boards and commissions and staff also review the application and comment or not. If they have no comment, that's fine, too. But it's just an opportunity for everyone to review the proposal from their lens, if you will, safety, fire, safety, you know, highway, water. So, yeah, it's just planning board opportunity.
May I make a comment on that?
Yes, Chaz.
That is in the historic district, and I don't see historic district being on the referral list.
They are. They're just not in this one.
Okay.
Yeah, I actually have gotten the referral comments from the Historic District Commission. Yes. So, yeah, they are. They have definitely been.
Okay, so if there, if there is no motion, we can send it back that it was reviewed and we have no comment? Board members?
I'm good with no comment.
I'm also good with no comment.
So am I.
And Michael?
Dave here.
Okay, thank you very much. Beth, would you take care of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So now we are at 4:44. Well, excuse me, 6:44? Beth, forgive me, because I'm not gonna, whatever. So at 6:45, we have application for extension of stormwater management permit number 2, 2019-03 issued to in conjunction with the Campbell Farm OSPD definitive subdivision, North End Road, applicant Townsend Hill Realty Trust. Is there a representative of the trust here?
Yeah, Dana Roberts is here.
Okay, hi Dana.
Hi, how are you?
You're on.
So we're requesting an extension to the stormwater management permit that was issued in 2019. We got a late start on our project primarily because we were trying to get our CR in order. And we had a lot of issues that came up, particularly once we got into 2020. And we do have the project completely underway at this point. And we have been able to get pretty good progress at this point, but we weren't able to meet the the December timeline. So we're just requesting to be able to have the extension to the stormwater management permit so we can complete the subdivision and get it all buttoned up.
Beth, do we have everything that we need on that?
Yes, actually, they've been doing a great job supplying the updates and all the information that has been requested has been provided. There have been site visits, a couple of site visits. And I can attest that things are very much in order. This is, the only question I have is there may, I'm not sure of the length of the extension because I think this is the first time this has been done. I couldn't find any record of it. So I'm assuming it would be a two-year extension, but I am assuming that they're going to be done, you know. I would just assume a two-year since the initial permit was two years. So it would just be all the same conditions of the initial permit extended for two years. And I would do that in a letter format, basically. And the board would sign it.
Okay. And Dana, is that reasonable to you?
Yeah, I think that's more than reasonable. We're probably 70, maybe 75% completed within at this time.
Okay, that's good. So if there is no further questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion from a board member.
I'll make a motion to extend the stormwater management permit 2019-03 to Townsend Hill Realty Trust.
For a period of two years.
For a period of two years.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Julie Byers, yes.
Mike Verosco, yes.
Janordiz, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you all very much. Good luck, Dana.
Hey, thank you very much.
Who was the second on that? I'm sorry.
I seconded that.
Ian? Okay, great.
Okay, so now we have some time before the 7:15. So let's go back down to the work session. Beth, if you're ready.
Yep, and there we go.
Okay, 3.5, final MRPC Townsend Walkability Report.
Okay, that's a pretty easy update. At this point, the Board of Selectmen will be having a discussion on the final report. And Brad Harris from MRPC will be joining in that discussion. I do not have the link or login yet, but it should be coming soon. So January 4th, at the Board of Selectmen's regularly scheduled evening meeting, I believe. It would be great if all members could attend. And if so, I can post it jointly. But it would be an opportunity to talk about the contents of the report and, you know, any next steps that we want to talk to MRPC about.
Okay, so that is January 4th, you said?
Yes.
I think a joint meeting might be good.
Okay, post it. That would be great.
Okay. And then let us know the time that we get. 3.6, Townsend Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness and Hazard Mitigation Plan Implementation. Beth, can you take that, please?
Yes. Where are we at with that? I don't think there's really been any movement on that. You know, to that extent, we are going to have, again, a quick update. But hopefully, we'll have a new land use coordinator and a grant writer on board shortly. So this is a pretty exciting, you know, one of those exciting projects they'll be able to take on and move forward amongst many other things. So we're pretty excited in the land use department to welcome them.
Okay, thank you for that. So why don't we go right into correspondence? Since we have about 20 minutes, maybe we can get through all this before the 7:45.
Okay. Okay, two notices. Notice of Decision from the Town of Pepperell, CBA. Oh, looks like eight variances have been granted to Clark's Retirement Park. The decision doesn't have a lot of detail, but if anyone wants more on that, I can certainly reach out to Pepperell for the decision.
Interesting, because that is one of the, well, of course, Pepperell has a couple of mobile home parks. And I believe that his, I believe that that park is a senior park. That's only 55 and over, or something like that.
Yeah, retirement park, I would, yeah, assume that.
Yeah, could you get that? Could you get the decision on that?
I could get that decision if you're interested.
Yep.
Okay, sure. Let me make a note of it.
Again, that's part of planning and increased housing, something that we don't have here.
Yeah.
And I can't remember if they have public sewer or not.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so that would be good to know.
For Mason Road, Mason Street.
Is that the one out by Our Lady of Fatima, or whatever it's called?
It is, it's off of 13.
113?
No, it's off of Route 13. Excuse me. Yeah. Not 13 in Townsend. It's 113 in Pepperell. As you go towards the center, you go off on the right-hand side and the name escapes me of the road. But it's actually, the park itself is between two roads off of 113. Before you get to the center, before you get to the rotary even.
Oh, okay.
At Hollis and whatnot. So, yeah, that would be interesting for us as planning to know, and certainly for housing, I think.
Oh, yeah. Yep. That sounds great. And then the Town of Lunenburg Planning Board has a notice of decision for a stormwater management permit and site plan approval for construction of a 372,000 square foot warehouse and distribution center off of Lemmon Street Shirley Road. That sounds like a big project. Yeah. Very good.
Okay.
So that is done. Okay, a memo regarding the annual town report, drafting of the annual town report for new members. This is a time for the board to sort of look back over the year and sort of recognize members for different activities and, you know, sort of review what the board has accomplished and what maybe, you know, even put a little goal setting in there, you know, so if anybody would like.
Did you do it last year?
No, Chaz did it, and it was wonderful.
All right.
I'm happy to do it, but if you have somebody who would like to write, I'd supply the information.
Beth, I'll work on it with you.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
Send it out to the board, because we have a lot of new board members.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll work on that with you.
Okay, that'd be great. Fantastic. How come I, yeah. Just a moment, thanks. Okay, this is an announcement. I was gonna actually, Carol, I was gonna actually ask you to share this, but since I never got around to it, I apologize. The town has been awarded a planning, well, actually, MRPC, the Planning Commission, has been awarded a planning assistant grant to update Townsend's open space and recreation plan, which has last been done in 2013. One of the big bonuses is the person who wrote the open space and recreation plan, Karen Chapman, is on staff at the Planning Commission, and she will, I'm sure, be involved in this to some degree. So she's a planner at the Planning Commission and very familiar with Townsend. So it's kind of a really nice opportunity. So here, there's some details on the grant. I think that basically a kickoff meeting is tentatively like, like it says here, going to be held in January. We are still looking for members to fill the important space on the committee. And it will be roughly from Karen, you know, I did talk to Karen Chapman, and she said, since it's an update and not a brand-new document, it won't be that intense. You know, it should be, it should be a fairly, you know, it shouldn't be a very difficult task, but she anticipates about an 18-month commitment. I'm not sure if it would be quite that long, but, so.
I don't know if it'll be that long either.
Yeah, yeah. Especially with Karen helping.
Yeah, and they already have all the maps.
Yeah.
So all of the open space that we have is already mapped out. I think probably the newest addition is probably the rail trail.
Oh, yeah.
You know, from 2003 anyway, or 13.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exciting. It's exciting news.
Carol, is that something you might want to do?
The open space?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd already done that with Veronica. Actually, I attempted to update that document until like, it was just too, too hard for me to update the whole document.
Okay, so perfect. At least if you're the representative to MRPC, you'll be working with Karen on that. So.
I had, I had met with Veronica once or twice on that, and I had attempted to update the document myself. And I said, I can't do this.
Yeah, quite lengthy.
You don't need to do it yourself, because we'll have help from MRPC now. Okay, do we need a motion to appoint Carol to that as a representative to MRPC on the open space?
Actually, she's already on the committee, correct, Carol?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I think Veronica sent me a note the other day, so. About the grant, so.
Yeah, so she's all set. This is just a rough, oh, I'm sorry, I moved on. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so 4.4 is just a proposal for meetings for the planning board twice a month for the year 2020. I think there's maybe one month, October, that we won't be, that the board will only meet once. So, and again, these are subject to change. If there isn't, you know, a huge workload or, you know, if you don't have a lot of applications or whatnot, then, you know, you can change meetings at your discretion, but this is just a preliminary proposal. This here is Board of Selectmen's meeting on the 4th Tuesday in January. That's the meeting for the Walkability Study. On the Thursday, the 6th, oh, that's been changed. I'm sorry, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I didn't know that another date has been set yet.
It has. I think it's the 27th. Yeah, it's the 27th.
Wednesday?
Yeah, I'll update that. Okay. So that's that. Tip Development Memo is just something for you to review. It's the Planning Commission is working on the tip. So, you know, this is, there is, Townsend still is not in a position yet to put a product, a project up, but we are still working with MRPC, you know, to sort of finalize a project, and we're working on that, but it's not quite ready yet.
Okay.
Sorry, it didn't work very well. And then this is just the good news, that Ian, his appointment letter, and that's how I put in for correspondence. So.
Yay.
You're a full board once again.
So just as a reminder to everyone, I don't know if everybody got, maybe everybody already got it, the notice from the town clerk in reference to the, I think it's January 12th, when you start taking out your papers. when you start taking out your papers for the April election.
Ah, yes.
Have, have, have other board members received that memo?
Well, that was discussed at the last meeting, so, um, I think, well, whoever was at the last meeting and got that folder received that, but I didn't know there was one from the town clerk.
Came out this week.
I missed that, I will definitely look it up and send it out.
Okay, very good. Just, I, I think it's, um, because we're coming up on that election and there is a process and we don't want our members to be left behind.
Yeah.
I would keep it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Put that on the next agenda, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We have some more time, so what else is in work session?
I think I was kind of at, I think we're all set, and if, um, the, we're expecting Bob from the engineering firm, I, I don't know if he's on the call, but he may want to go early, you know.
We have a 7:15, yeah, we have a 7:15 or 7:45, what, what is it?
Yeah, it's an A and R, so it's not a public hearing.
Okay.
But I don't know if, um, Mr. Conley is on the call, I can't tell.
I am, I'm here.
Oh, hi, there you are, mom, I'm sorry, there you go. You guys, if you want to go early.
Could I see the agenda, please?
Yeah. I don't anticipate there would be any, um, a butters, this is purely, you know, just for I'm sorry, the, um, convenience. Yep.
Oh, 7:15, okay.
Yeah, so it's an A and R, so.
Okay, um. Let me just. Okay, so, um, with the, I'm sorry, I don't have his name, you said it was Bob?
Bob Conway, I'm with David E. Ross in Harvard.
Okay, um, would you like to go now regarding 211 Mason Road and 213 Mason Road?
Essentially, what we're, what we're looking to do is to have a parcel swap for parcels of the same size, uh, between the two neighbors. As on the drawing, on the plan, you can see that there are some issues with, um, fencing, uh, existing driveway and to try to to swap the land in order to, um, accommodate these properties with the fence and so forth, so they could get it on their own land. So it's, um, it's a straightforward switch, uh, swap with the same square footage and they're, they're adjoining.
Okay, so are there any questions from the board members, please?
Questions, so, I'm sorry, first time, so, um, when you mean the, when you mean the swap, you mean like, I see the little triangle or sort of triangle to the left and then the little, I want to say bubble in the bottom side of the middle line, those, those are the parcels that are trying to be swapped?
Yes, parcel A, they're looking to transfer parcel A to, to Goodwin. And parcel B would be transferred to, uh, Michelle.
So this is going up, that's coming down.
Yes, A is coming down, B is going up.
And they're same size.
Okay.
So Ian, if you review the application, at the bottom of the application, I put the regulations that the planning board members, um, review, um, and they're just some ideas, just some ideas or requirements that the applicant needs to meet, um, for planning board approval. And I have gone through all the, um, requirements, both for the application and for an A and R plan submission, and I talked to the building commissioner, I talked to the assessors, and we really look, you know, take a close look at everything from, you know, tax state, property tax status and, and, um, any kind of easements are, you know, and deeds and all of that are all researched and everything is in order. Um, so I can tell you that, but anytime I'd be happy to go with it, uh, go through it with you too, so you can learn how, how we, um, evaluate that.
That will be amazing, but I, 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 I don't think that we have to do it now, I don't want to take time.
Sure, yeah.
Beth, the only question I have, um, are they, um, both parcels, um, update on their taxes? There's no back taxes or anything due? Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Good question, Mike. So if there isn't any further questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve this A and R law. Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R plan and application for 211 Mason Road and 213 Mason Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? A call for a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Julie Byers, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Ferasco, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I know that, um, Ian, you, you wouldn't know this probably, but everyone, each planning board member that voted will have to come into the office and sign, um, the plan right here down at the bottom. And, um, then I will be giving that to, um, sorry, my hair, I'll be giving that, Robert, would you like to come pick that Mylar up? Um, that's typically how we do it, and then you record it.
We'll do it.
Great, as soon as everyone signed it, I will contact you.
Well, thank you for your help, Beth.
You're very welcome.
Moving this through.
My pleasure.
The town hall's open, right, Beth? They didn't, yeah, lock that, okay.
Yeah, so, and I, yeah, so, yeah, just probably call ahead, just make sure in there. Oh, yeah, okay, great, so that's it.
Okay, I can, um, uh, see you sometime after Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, so on, on the agenda, would, do we have anything left under work session?
No, I don't see anything.
And correspondence?
No, uh, in your folder, there is some extra correspondence that you can browse through that will go on next meeting agenda. It's not time sensitive, but it's something that you can take a look at it. Some notices from the state and, uh.
Okay, and you, and you will update that date for the Housing Authority?
Yep.
Trust Selectman, Housing Production Plan Consultant, yes, okay. Um.
Yeah.
For those of you who, um, Chaz, you were at the Townsend Housing Authority meeting, um, it was a good meeting and information that the board may want to view, um, the Housing Authority meeting of last Thursday. Prior to the January 27th, I think that'll be helpful, do you think so, Chaz?
Um, yeah, I, I do, um, I just want, i- if I may, um, just kind of touch upon this, I'm putting on my state representative hat for Housing Authority, just so everybody is knowing. The, the plan is, in, in my mind, one of the most comprehensive, um, housing production plans that Townsend has ever had is going to be put forth to the DHCD, which is the state agency. Um, with that, um, we're really asking the planning board, to assist us in moving forward with the planning that we're doing in the housing production plan. We need to, uh, a- a- as we all know, we need to increase a lot of things, revenue, number one in town. Uh, but number two, we are really sorely behind, not only in affordable housing, but just housing in general in Townsend. And there's really good opportunities for us to be able to, um, generate and, and improve the, um, um, economic development of Townsend right now. And, um, the, uh, the input that we get from you guys is going to be really important because we're going to be asking you further on down the road to assist us with some zoning changes that, that desperately need to happen. Um, we're going to be also looking with the Board of Health, we're looking for the, uh, other boards for their assistance as well. So any input you possibly can, we tentatively have our next meeting on January 27th. Um, we're, we really want to button up the housing production plan, and most importantly, um, what we have in this housing plan really should be going into the master plan that you guys are, are, um, are talking about. These are things that need to, to match, so that when we do, um, go for grants, um, and there are a lot of grants that are available for us to move forward with our housing production plan, it has to match the ma- the master plan. So I urge you to, um, I know it's a lot of work and I understand it's a lot of reading, but if anybody has any questions, you are more than welcome to, to, uh, uh, set up a, a meeting with me and I'll be more than glad to, to let you know what our planning is, or if you have any questions in regards to affordable housing or housing in general.
And, and Chaz, piggybacking on this, because I don't see it on this agenda, but I know that I sent it out before, is the new law that's, uh, taking effect on January 22nd.
Yeah.
Me too, and that has to do with the, um, the governor's plan to help streamline, uh, the permitting process for new housing.
Yep.
And so the, the point about the bylaws, um, being adjusted to help facilitate, um, that goal is something that planning is going to really have to look at. Beth, can you just answer me if that was forwarded to the planning board members?
Uh, that is in the correspondence folder of not on the agenda, um.
Okay.
So you can find it into, in, in your folders. I believe you're talking, I can pull it up real quick, um. If I, if I could just show everybody so they can review it, because it's very important, I just didn't have it on this agenda.
Well, I keep remembering 358, so am I right, Chaz?
It's 30A.
30A, yeah.
Yeah, and so where does 358 come in? Because I know it's part of that as a, maybe as a subsection.
Um, it could be just about anything, Lori.
Okay, so this, which isn't, to, to the members, please, this which is in your, um,
Correspondence.
Correspondence, yeah, and it is, okay, somewhere right, I know, we were discussing this as like MBTA and only because we're in the, um, adjacent to, uh, an MBTA line that we somehow still fall into this, uh, category. So this is an important, um, notice for the planning board members to know about. This is something that we need to look at and see how we can facilitate through some, uh, bylaw changes. Right?
Yeah, zoning ordinance that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as a right, provided however, that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. Um, so it's, you're basically going to be doing a district, you're going to be, um, establishing a district where um, multifamily housing will be able to be, um, developed.
Right, and this also, and the reason for the discussion about, or the comment Chaz was making about the Board of Health, is that we're really looking, um, we'll be looking to the Board of Health to see where maybe we can have shared septic system. You know, a little more dense area, but certainly somehow trying to add to, um, housing intent.
And with the housing production plan, all of the research has been done as to where the, the, the most, um, logical place would be. All of the information is contained in the, in the housing production plan, so that the, the planning board wouldn't have to do feasibility studies and all that kind of stuff. All the information is in the housing production plan, so that you guys would be able to take it and run with it.
All the mapping, right, so, okay, so that is something that we should be excited about. And I think that was all I had, is there anything left?
Did you do 4.5 stormwater management permit updates?
Uh, there's no update at this time, uh, the application, the extension for the application was on the agenda, so, there, there's no update on that. Other than taking care of that. Which the board did.
Okay, and our next meeting is January 10th.
Yeah.
Okay, we have the 27th on the other one.
Did you do 4.8? Yeah, yeah, can you do 4.8, Lori, just explain?
Oh, I thought I did, so, well, Chaz and I, um, yeah, and, and you had said it was going to be the 27th now.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that, again, board members, um, really important joint meeting. Very, very informative, great background for moving forward. Okay, so put that on your calendars for the 27th as a must-attend, uh, meeting.
Thank you.
Is it 27th of January or the 27th of, okay?
27th of January.
Yeah, a Thursday night, a Thursday night, probably around 7, right?
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, their meetings are usually at 7. Anything else to come before the meeting this evening? And with the questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:19.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:19 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, please.
Carol Hoff says yes.
Julie Byers, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Ferasco, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you all very much for this evening, stay well, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.